A handout describing the procedures of the meeting, possible board decisions, and designer review board appeals is available at the table by the front door. Please note that all appeals must be filed within 15 calendar days of the designer review board decision date. The chairperson may reorder agenda items at his or her discretion. In terms of a roll call, Board Member Ellis?
Present.
Board Member Herman?
Here.
Board Member Palmer?
Here.
Board Member Simonian is not present. And Chair Insua?
Here.
Okay, report regarding posting of the agenda. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall at or before 5:00 p.m. on March 7, 2013. Oral communications discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. I have no oral communication cards.
Willia, do I need to be voted in as chair by the members that are here at this time?
Oh, were the elections?
No, just for the history sitting.
At this point in time. You know what? That would be a great point.
I move that Mr. Insua be nominated as a chair.
Okay, as a chair pro tem in this case.
Chair pro tem.
Yes, thank you. And we have a motion by Board Member Ellis. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Board Member Herman. Alan Favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Insua, for being chair pro tem. We do not have any oral communication cards on the.
We do not, but I'd like to mention that I only have one speaker card, and that's for the second project this evening on Alabama. If you're planning on speaking on the first project this evening, the Greenbrier property, if you want to get a speaker card, which are right here at the entrance, go ahead and fill that out, and then when you come up to speak, you can turn it over to the project.
Okay. We have two items on tonight's agenda. At this point in time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Chair Pro Tem Insua.
Thank you. I'll say it again. If the first project this evening is the project on 1521 Greenbrier Road, that's the first project. If you're planning on speaking on that project today, the presentation or discussion on the project, we need to have you fill out a speaker card, which are right here at the entrance. If you don't have one at this time, we'll make sure you get one, but if you're ready to, after the presentation by staff, if you want to speak, go ahead and speak, but you'll have a little time between the presentation and now, but we'll make sure that you get it if you do speak this evening. Okay. Yes, why don't we go and have the presentation for the project, first project, which is 1 PDR 1237 023, which is 1521 Greenbrier Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Pro Tem Insua, and good afternoon, Board Members. As you stated, the project before you, the first project, is located at 1521 Greenbrier Road, which is within the R1R floor area ratio District 2 zone. The subject site is a 12,460 square foot lot, rectangular in size, and was developed in 1965 with a one-story, 2,291 square foot house and an attached three-car garage. The house is designed in the ranch style. The applicant is proposing to construct an 887 square foot addition to the front of the house, as well as a reconstruction of a covered patio at the rear. The facade remodel reflects a contemporary interpretation of the ranch style. The rear yard will also be redesigned to include a number of amenities to enhance the outdoor experience. The existing house is centrally located on the lot with the garage projecting out further and closer to the street. The existing front setback is 25 feet and 6 inches. The addition will reduce the front setback to 21 feet 6 inches, a difference of 4 feet. The new setback is fairly consistent with other homes in the area. The project meets all other zoning requirements such as floor area ratio, lot coverage, landscape, and parking. Although the residence will be larger and closer to the street, the mass and scale has been addressed appropriately, as reflected in the drawings, which, but this project is also helped being that it's a one-story volume, and the addition will maintain this volume. The house exhibits a low-line horizontal profile with side and front-facing gables, including new nesting gables. The new gables will be staggered and will be lower than the primary ridge of the existing house, and the new entry will also be recessed. As previously stated, the addition will result in a slight change in architectural style, particularly along the front elevation. Some of these changes include the roofing material, which will be composition shingle, an entry that will have a double door, nesting gables, and a change in materials such as stone veneer and siding. These materials supports the architectural style of the residence. Staff is suggesting some changes to the color of the materials. For example, the new windows and garage doors should not be white, but a more muted color, and the garage door should be of, should not be of the carriage-style design as reflected in the perspective. But overall, the execution of the design is appropriate, and staff recommends approval of the project with some conditions, which are, again, the color of the windows and garage door, that it did not be white, and all new windows should be clear glass with no grid pattern, which is proposed currently, and the panel design of the garage door should be simplified further, and the light should remain plain, and that the garage door should not be of the carriage design. And that concludes my presentation of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dong. Do we have any questions for the staff presentation?
I have a couple. Do we know what the existing windows are?
Existing.
Real wise? And while you're looking for that, you stated the roofs to be asphalt shingles?
Yes.
Because the plans say lightweight concrete. So we just need clarification on that.
Did I make a mistake there? It's a shingle?
You'll be able to explain first.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
That was my mistake. That was my mistake.
Okay.
So forgive me, Mr. Dong. The existing is lightweight concrete?
No.
Asphalt shingle.
The existing is asphalt shingle, and the new addition is going to have lightweight concrete?
Yes.
Like the plan.
Like the plan, sure. Okay. Any more questions, Ms. Palmer?
No, I have no.
Hi. Mr. Dong, this document was included.
Oh.
It's on the backside of this, and I was wondering, is that a mistake?
No, that's a mistake.
Gotcha. Okay, I didn't quite understand what that was about.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I noticed on the photographs that were provided that there was construction undergoing on the project, at least when the pictures were taken, though it does not appear. Aye, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it appears that the project that you just described was at the rear of the property, the bay window.
Yes, that's all at the rear.
Okay. I, those are my questions. Thank you, sir. And did the question ever get answered that Ms. Palmer had concerning the window, existing window type? My guess, if you want me to guess, is aluminum sliders.
I believe so, yes, uh-huh.
It was a guess, but I don't.
Just.
From the picture that I see?
Based on the picture.
Here's to be solid pane aluminum slider.
So just the new ones are proposed to be?
Vinyl, yes, vinyl window.
Mr. Herman, do you have any questions for staff, sir?
Oh, you are right.
No. Okay. Any more questions? Okay. The applicant has indicated to Willia that they don't need to speak unless we have questions for them that they may be able to clarify. They don't need to speak if we don't have questions.
They don't wish to speak.
Do we have, pardon?
They don't wish to speak.
They don't wish to speak. Do we have any questions that would, you would want them to come up and help explain something that they're doing? I don't have any questions. Ms. Palmer, do you have any? Do you think that you're going to need?
I just wonder about the windows being half vinyl and half of the aluminum, or whatever they are. Maybe they could come up and address what the windows are for sure, and then we can discuss that.
If we, very good. Why don't we have, any other question you'd have?
Window, I'd be interested in that window conversation.
Willia, would it be possible to let her know?
Of course.
Come up briefly for just a clarification?
Of course.
Thank you.
Looks like they're confirming with.
Okay, sure.
Starting that answer.
Where is that line? On the computer program? No. Is it, is it, you see, I, I, this?
I think it's, I think it's a line that used to be the old wrap, the end of the roof, that they didn't take out and then.
Yeah, okay.
So it's just a line that toward the previous roof was, and now they're popping up.
Because I looked around and it didn't coin. Yeah, right, right through there. That's about right exactly where it is. Computer aided design.
If you don't mind coming up, please.
We, good afternoon. Please state your name and your address for the record, and then we're just going to ask just one question, at least at this time, to help us understand. Your name and address, please.
My name is Chigunati, 3454 West First Street, Los Angeles, 90004.
Very good. Thank you. The question, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Palmer, one of our commissioners, to ask you, see if you can clarify.
The existing windows, do you know what material they are?
Existing window was aluminum, but at the time, we got the permit for inside remodeling and the bay window. I believe I submitted the plan to change that windows to vinyl.
So the existing windows have been changed to vinyl?
No.
We will change, but we submitted the plan for remodeling and then bay window before we had a permit already for, from building and safety.
Permit has expired? I'm a little confused.
Yeah, then we need to change.
So you need to resubmit for all vinyl windows? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be the procedure.
So the proposed windows on the new design and the existing windows, everything would be vinyl in the end?
Now, I'm going to restate it one more time, because this has significant, as we all know that, so let me restate it one more time. Your existing house has aluminum windows. Your new addition, which is primarily the one that's coming forward, is going to have vinyl windows. And as part of the whole new project, the existing windows in the house are going to be removed and replaced with vinyl windows like the new windows you're installing.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Forgive me one more, any other questions for the applicant?
That's not what the plan states.
Correct, but I'm getting a lot of nodding heads in the, in the audience from the project.
So that proposal has not been proposed at this point in time?
Yes, now, so the question is, I'm crystal clear from asking the question. Willia, would we, even though as Ms. Palmer is indicating, they're not as crystal clear from the documents that we're reviewing, that that's what they're going to do, would we be able, per this discussion, be able to identify that that is what the scope of the approval will be at this time?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the board has the authority to request any type of window.
Okay.
Which that would be compatible with what the proposal is.
Very good. And would you like to say anything else, ma'am?
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying. So just to recap, I think we're, when we get to that point, I think we're all.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Herman, would you like to start? Oh, I'm sorry.
This shows the bay window, and they said that was not completed, so is the bay window a part of the proposal?
It is, yet at the same time, yet I'm sure it is, because they need to, right, changing all the windows, right?
Correct. Mr. Dong, something's wrong with your microphone, so you might want to turn the other one on as well.
Okay, the light's on. So, so in, in the, in the, in the spirit of what was just discussed with the applicant, all windows are going to match the new windows that are being installed at this time with this approval, bay windows and any other windows.
Correct, that's correct.
Any other question, Ms. Palmer?
And that's something that the board might condition as part of the approval.
Yeah, clarify, yeah, when we get to that one, I know we're going to be clarifying. Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Herman. I don't have any comments. Ms. Palmer, would you like to?
Are we commenting now?
Comment, yes, we're commenting.
Well, now that we've clarified the roof and the windows, my only other comment is regarding the landscape plan, and I think that staff needs to look at that. They have, some of the trees are labeled as hedges. The date palms are four feet on center, right on the property line, and that would be unacceptable. And about 30% of it's not drought tolerant, so that whole landscape plan needs to be looked at and revised. And I would not recommend the date palms being used in that situation. Those are my only comments.
My only comment was, I would like to see the applicant do something other than vinyl windows, as the board has heard before, I'm a broken record on vinyl windows. I could support any other type of window but vinyl. White vinyl is just not a, doesn't apply here.
If they're willing to consider something else, I'd certainly be supportive. It fits in, you know, it's, it would make a nice looking home. And that was, that's all I got, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, because there is a bit of discrepancy with the drawings, I want to be crystal clear with the roof. The drawings are currently showing that the new roof material is going to be new lightweight concrete tile. And that the, and you can, you can help me, of course, you guys. And the existing roofing material is asphalt tiles?
Existing.
Existing is asphalt tile.
Or asphalt shingles.
Asphalt shingle, yeah.
Asphalt shingle, okay. Okay, so, what, oh, no, the existing?
Yes.
No, it's a rock roof.
It's, because it's a reflection.
Oh, no, I, now, I'm sorry, it's a, I don't know what you call it, but it's.
Asphalt shingle.
It's got white rocks on top of it. Is that what you put on top of that asphalt shingle?
No.
Okay, well, that's what it's got. If you look here at the picture, you can see, I mean, that's not asphalt shingle. That's a rock roof.
I was right at the beginning.
And I thought it actually mentions that in your.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
It's a, it's a rock.
Okay, and that, okay, so let me see if I can go to the roofing plan.
No, there's no material board, sir?
You're right, it says, features a rock.
Rock roof, yeah. So my staff report was correct, and I got confused.
So the scope of the project is to retain the rock roof on the existing residence and add lightweight concrete roofing tile on the new addition. Is that correct, Mr. Dong?
Yes, that is correct, Ms. Insua.
Okay.
I'm hearing, yes, actually.
Okay, okay, since this is, why don't we open the, because we want to make crystal clear what's going, why don't we open the discussion, and if you or a person that with your team is better informed as to what the roofing material is, please come back up. And if you need someone to assist you in describing what the intention is, please feel free to bring up one of someone from your team. Okay.
The existing house has a roof with something like a rock, like set.
Rock, yes.
And then there's going to be new roof addition because of addition, and then all the roof material will be lightweight concrete tile.
Okay, so let me repeat, if I understand you correctly. The existing house today has the rock roof on it. The new construction is going to have the lightweight concrete tile, but as part of the project, you're going to go to the existing house and replace that whole roof, which is presently rock roof, with the proposed lightweight concrete tile for everything?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying it for us. Okay, that's another one of those items that we're going to. Okay, so, does anyone have any question, what the intent is when they finish? Okay. With no further questions, I'll just sum, yes, Ms. Palmer?
I noticed here a concrete block wall. I'm not sure where that's located. Split face wall.
Is it on the pool? That piece along the pool?
That, that would be for the retaining wall that's being pushed back a couple feet in the back to enlarge the rear.
I think if you look at sheet A10, near the, near, at the left side of the pool on our page, you'll see that it is pocheter and a hash mark.
Okay, I see it now, yes, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions?
We're going to pass that.
Okay, well, I'll summarize. I think the project is done well. I think it's executed well, although a little confusing as to what the intent is, but that's a good opportunity, why we discuss it. I think the addition is more than appropriate. It's in keeping with the general architectural style, and although there are some questions concerning the window types of vinyl, personally, I concur, on certain homes, that type of window is not my favorite, but I think on this more contemporary 50s interpretation of architecture, I think it would be okay. My general feeling. Any other further discussions to discuss at this?
I was just going to comment, I think you're correct on the windows, because the elevations show what appears to be a fiberglass or aluminum window frame with the vinyl, where we could have much more white showing. I don't think that would be good for the design.
My concerns always is that the next homeowner and not, you know, you're stuck with white windows, or whatever, you know, the vinyl not being something that can paint. And I'm not crazy about my vinyl patio furniture, I would hate to put the money in the windows and have that issue.
Well, now, you can get like 15 colors.
You're not going to paint aluminum either, really.
No, my preference has usually been the fiberglass, whether, you know, the clad or something. Yep.
There is, one of the recommended conditions for this case was to have a muted color for the vinyl windows, which it does come in this tan color and whatnot, so that was one of staff's recommended conditions of approval. The board can.
Well, let's do this.
Can modify the color, or you can either modify the material, so.
Let's do this. In your, in your summary review, Mr. Dong, can you, can you give us those items that we've discussed, holding off the window? Leave that one at the very end so that we can then, but go ahead and, let's see if we can discuss and record what you've got.
Okay, we heard a comment from Ms. Palmer about the landscape plan, specifically concerning the date palm that should be eliminated from the palette, and also the trees were mislabeled as shrubs on the plan.
And about 30% of it's not drought tolerant?
Correct, so that would have to be changed to reflect complete drought tolerant and/or California-friendly landscape palette. And also, we heard that overall, the project has been executed well, and the detailing is in keeping with architectural style and appropriate to this neighborhood, and that's all we heard.
Okay, one more. The whole roof, both existing and proposed, to be of lightweight concrete tile, as noted in the sample supply, but the whole project now would be, both existing and proposed project will be reinstalled with lightweight concrete tile?
And that the bay window, which is not shaded or anything, would be on the plan when the plans are approved, as of proposed construction.
Because it's, right, expired. It's expired. Okay, and that leaves us then the window. Mr. Dong, would you?
Yeah, I'm, I don't know, I, I see what you're saying, Ms. Palmer, that they do, they end up having that much wider.
Well, they don't have a sill, they don't have a recess now, so it's going to be the wide three-inch frame.
All right, and remember, they're doing the whole house, so it'll be consistent.
Right, that's good.
Would, would you like to consider that as planner, Ms. Willia, indicated that we could say that instead of white, be a off-white or an ivory color, something that, not as stark?
Yeah, that definitely helps.
Would help, but I still think the framing would be, what's exposed would be, take away from that contemporary look. What is your opinion?
Do you think that the frame of this is too big?
The vinyl, the vinyl windows will have like that much white showing. What's there now?
Right.
And what's showing on the plans, the elevations, is a narrow, as you would see, an aluminum.
I mean, that's.
Doesn't bother you?
I mean, I'm not sure, and this, it looks to me like this could be the flange that would actually get covered up by the stucco in this image here.
Well, we don't have a sample of the window, how it's installed, so that could be.
I mean, if it's a standard, I mean, it's a standard Milgard window, I would, I would think that the frame wouldn't be overly big, it would be fairly standard looking, like an aluminum window.
If it's that, I don't have a problem.
May, if I may interject, it may help if the way the windows could be installed either as nail-in or with a modified Z-bar, would that help? And Mr. Platt could elaborate on that as well.
Yes, modified Z-bar, we wouldn't recommend for a new DRB-approved installation, it's something we really do. And are we talking about new and existing opening?
Yes.
Yes, the whole project is.
Yeah, we wouldn't, modified Z-bar is something we only do especially for replacement in aluminum window openings, where we trim the flange around the Z-bar so that it kind of fits into the opening a little bit better. We wouldn't, and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly which window openings we're talking about, but generally not.
This would be for all windows.
The whole job is going to be replaced with one type of window.
Yeah, then, then in this case, we'd recommend a nail-in window.
Of aluminum type or vinyl type, either.
Either one, if you're open to vinyl, we could do that.
I don't object if it's recessed enough or the perimeter's covered up enough so that it comes across as a narrow.
reveal on it.
I just don't want it tacked up there with the.
Well, I don't know windows installations perfectly, but I think as Mr. Platt was saying, they're going to have to take the stucco or the plaster stuck on this case, you know, a couple inches away from the existing windows, paper it, over-paper it with that, and then nail it on, and then they'll come back in and feather it in.
Right, this, this flange would, is the nailer.
Yeah.
Right, and then that gets covered with the stucco.
I have no problem with that.
So you get a fairly narrow aluminum style type.
Or vinyl in this case.
Yeah, but I say aluminum's type.
Yeah.
It looks like aluminum.
Because it wasn't specified what they were putting in, I just want to make sure that it becomes.
And they're, and they're putting this one, so why don't we, why don't we try something here? Rather, with respect to the window, give this a shot. One, the full project, both existing and proposed, shall have new vinyl windows in the off-white or beige color tone palette.
Yeah, I would even take the staff's muted or tone.
And, forgive me, muted or tone, leave it at that.
Okay. With a nail-in installation.
Yeah, because it's going to be nailed in anyway. And let's see if that, review the whole, the whole conditions right now, and let's see if that gets a vote.
Okay, so we heard that the date palm should be removed from the landscape palette, and also revise or revisit all landscape materials so that each plant is drought tolerant, and that the existing roof will be removed, and the new, the roof of the addition will be clad with the same material, which will be concrete, lightweight concrete tiles.
So both new and existing?
Both new and existing will, will have concrete, concrete tiles, and all new windows shall have, shall be vinyl windows in a muted tone, installed as nail-in.
But instead of all new windows, project scope includes all new windows at both existing and proposed construction?
How about just all windows?
All window openings will be filled with nail-in vinyl, off-white, beige color.
Or as.
Muted.
There's a similar window type as a fiberglass with the nail-in like that?
Mm-hmm.
Could I ask for a consideration that they consider a fiberglass paneable or a paneable window?
Sure.
I won't condition that, but I would do that as a consideration.
And just so the board, when, when you were talking about the thinness of the frame, windows these days don't, there isn't, thinness doesn't really exist the way it used to when we think of old aluminum windows, so we're always going to see more window frame than we used to, and we just kind of expect that these days, so.
Don't want this.
Yeah, I would say.
That would be the flange, the retroflange.
Right, the Home Depot vinyl, white vinyl window is a three-inch, you know.
And that's what would be next.
Very good. And have you indicated a consideration, as indicated by Mr. Ellis?
Yes, consider utilizing fiberglass windows and also in an, as a nail-in installation.
Very good. Very good.
In lieu of vinyl windows.
Okay. There was also identified the bay window on the site plan.
Correct. Thank you.
And you did the garage door also, that your existing garage door?
That was one of the conditions. So if the board agreed to the other condition, that would be added to what you've directed staff.
There are actually two there. There's three, the panel design and then the carriage house design. I was at... if nobody else has a problem with that, I would support staff.
Okay. Very good. So that's... do we have a vote? Or a motion?
I'll move to approve with the conditions proposed.
Second.
Okay. We have motion for Ms. Palmer and a second from Mr. Herman with the recommendation and conditions from the board, as well as staff recommended conditions. This will be a roll call. Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes.
Chair Protam Insua?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. Thank you.
You've been approved. Thank you for your help. Okay. All right. Let's move on to the next project in a couple seconds.
Recycling paper, which I thought was a good...
Yeah, that was recycled.
Is that... yeah. I looked at it. It must not appear to this, but I gotta ask the question.
Okay. You're the case planner again, Mr. Don. The next project that we have for this evening, and the last one, is project number case 1 PDR 1232431-A. Street address 3232 Alabama Street. Why don't we have the staff presentation?
Thank you, Chair Protam Insua, and good afternoon, board member again. This project, as you stated, is located at 3232 Alabama Street. It's being submitted a first time as a final review. The subject property is located within the Placenta Highlands neighborhood, which is in the northern part of the city, and it is Zone R1 with floor area ratio District 2. The applicant is proposing to construct a 448-square-foot, one-story addition to the side of the existing residence, which will be visible from the street. The subject site is a rectangular 6,890-square-foot lot, which was developed in 1950 with a 1,029-square-foot house and an attached two-car garage. The house reflects characteristics of the minimal traditional style design, and there is also a covered patio and a prefabricated patio enclosure attached to the rear of the house. These two features are permitted. There is an approved administrative exception application, which was approved on January 17th of this year to maintain the 15-foot-wide garage door in lieu of the required 16-foot-wide garage door. The existing house sits 20 feet from the front property line. This is a non-conforming condition, but the addition will be set 25 feet away. The addition will be constructed to the east side of the residence where there is a generous setback. I believe it's 18 feet. As such, the proposed location of this addition is sensible and will preserve the openness of the front and rear yards. The neighborhood is primarily comprised of one-story homes. The proposed project will maintain that scale due to the modest size of the addition and that it is offset from the existing front facade by five feet, creating that modulated front elevation. The new side-facing gable and fenestration pattern also help achieve a sensible mass and scale. Many homes in this neighborhood also reflects the minimal traditional style design, and the proposed project will maintain that consistency. The building will be clad in stucco and composition shingle. There is also horizontal siding under the street-facing gable. The existing windows, which are aluminum, will be replaced with vinyl windows. This would apply to all new and existing window openings. The operation will be casement, hung, sliding, and fixed. The existing trim and seal will be retained. The existing house and proposed addition are modest in scale, and the design and materials appears appropriate. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the project with a couple of conditions. One, that the street-facing sliding bathroom window, which is small, should be changed to an awning, a hopper, or a casement window. And that all windows with internal grid should not be used. And while this is not proposed, this is just to safeguard that in the future, these windows should not be included in the project.
Very good. Do we have any questions for...
So all the windows proposed and existing will be changed out?
Yes.
Okay.
Not for staff.
You just said all the windows are gonna be replaced?
Correct.
That didn't seem to be consistent with the drawings. Window schedule? I guess there's doors... there's glass doors that remain that are there. So, okay. I get it.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. We have one speaker request card. It is from the designer, Ms. Yolanda McCoslin. Please come up and state your name and address and give us a presentation, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Yolanda McCoslin, 11431 Clyburn Avenue in Lake Vitoria, California, 91342. Good afternoon. I'm here to answer any of your questions. It is noted that all the windows are gonna be replaced. There's only one sliding glass window, sliding glass door in the back that is already existing vinyl that we're gonna match to that.
You know, I have one quick question. Is there a reason that the ridge line on the addition doesn't match the existing house?
The addition is a little bit wider than the existing. The existing, if you notice, the floor plan, it has a 20...
You wanna come up to the... please, you can approach.
I have it here. You can see it. In the front, there's a gable, and the ridge goes from front to back. And the width of that addition is less than the new addition on the side. So that's why the side addition has a higher ridge.
But that ridge could have moved down.
Not unless I change the slope, and then it doesn't match.
Not necessarily. We don't wanna play designer for you, but if you continue these right here and right here, you will match. One goes like a little tuck-over, is what it's called. But, okay.
Oh, okay.
And the slope could be different, right?
I don't like to make those different because it just is a design feature that it just looks like an addition, and I'm trying to match everything that you have existing.
But when we looked at this, we prioritized keeping the slope the same, and we recognized that there would be that little bump over that we thought was far enough back. It wouldn't be really noticeable.
It's 25 feet back.
It's funny, because that was the one... I looked at it every... that was the one part that caught my eye of... I wonder why they... why did they make their roof a little crazy, you know, just to build it and to deal with a roof? It's, you know... that was my one thought. Okay.
But I'm not familiar with the board member Insua's concept of how would it not?
I've got a little thing right here that if you just... this roof under here continues, and then this edge right here follows beyond, so it'll rise above it till you reach that 45. It can be framed. But either way, it doesn't matter. You don't see it, so... my old framing days. Sorry.
Oh, good.
Cut off fingers or...
No. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes. Where are you planning on putting the hot water heater?
The water heater is probably gonna be a tankless unit, and it's gonna be in the back. I haven't determined the location yet. It's gonna be... it's not seen from the street. It's probably gonna be... right now, it's in the garage.
It's in the garage. Well, right now, it's on the side. There it is.
For the addition, right, it's...
Yeah.
Gets removed, but it's...
I'm removing it. I'm probably gonna put it in the back. I haven't determined the area.
Any other questions for the designer? No. Ms. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Herman?
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Very clear set of drawings.
Thank you very much.
Why don't we start with Ms. Palmer, Mr. Don?
I don't have any issues with the design. It's pretty simple, straightforward. I just think that I've... was looking at the windows. I don't have a problem with the vinyl windows, but that... they've called out style line, Milgard, and that line, I don't think comes in a casement or awning window. They would just have to upgrade to a Mediterranean. Wouldn't they have another one that's a little higher that has those shapes? But other than that, I don't have any comment.
Mr. Ellis?
I tend to agree with Ms. Palmer. It's nicely done. I... the roof, I would ask for a consideration of matching the roof lines, just... but other than that, I have no other problem.
Herman?
I have no other comments.
For me, everything is clear. The roof is back, and you really don't see it. You can adjust a little bit. Maybe that'll be something that they resolve, but it's not a deal breaker for me.
Now, if you were framing that, would you have took a look at that and say, "God, couldn't it be simpler?"
Well, you...
Yeah. Okay.
I don't have my tool belt on nor my skill saw.
No, your skill saw, right. No, your worm saw.
Okay. Mr. Don, do you want to review and summarize what you have from...
Okay. We heard that the pro-line series for the vinyl, proposed vinyl windows, may not come in casement, so the applicant may have to upgrade to a different series.
Montecito.
Montecito?
Okay.
And also, we heard that the applicant should consider matching the roof line with the existing roof, so that's at the same level. And we also heard that the roof is not readily visible, so that it may not be that big of an issue.
Okay. I think we should put, although it's indicated in discussion but not written, that the proposed project to have all the windows to be with the...
Well, they have a door that they're matching. Did you include that in it, or...
For me, I just remember saying, the applicant saying, "All the windows are gonna be..."
All the windows. You're right. That's true.
Drawings show new windows all the way around?
Except the existing vinyl door.
And then one of the considerations or conditions which are indicated, staff, number one for that bath... that new bathroom window at the front, to have it as an awning or a hopper. That's because it is adjacent to a shower.
And forgive me, just for clarification, Board Member Palmer, when you mentioned[1661.82]